Good evening. At this time, if you would, please silence your cellphones and be advised these proceedings are recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the entrance and present it to the City Clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. At this time, I call to order the City Council meeting for the City of Grand Terrace. This is a regular meeting of August 14th, 2018. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Tara Vincross of Azure Hills Seventh Day Adventist Church, and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Wilson. If you would, please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Tonight, as we open our meeting, I'm going to be sharing with you a Celtic blessing as our prayer. "May the gift of leadership awaken in you as a vocation and keep you mindful of the citizens that call you to serve. As high over the mountains the eagle spreads its wings, may your perspective be larger than the view from the foothills. When the way is flat and dull at times of gray endurance, may your imagination continue to evoke horizons. May you have the wisdom to read time clearly and know when the seed of change will flourish. In your heart, may there be a sanctuary for the stillness where clarity is born. May your work be infused with passion and creativity and have the wisdom to balance compassion and challenge. And may integrity of soul be your first ideal, the source that will guide and will bless your work. Amen."
Amen. [applause] To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Councilmember. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Henderson?
Present.
Councilmember Hussey?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Protem Robles?
Present.
Mayor McNaboe?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, we do not have any special presentations, so we'll move to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, and they will be acted upon by City Council at one time without any discussion. However, any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion, and tonight I do have a request for removal of Item 2, which is approval of regular and special meeting minutes. Are there any other requests for removal?
Madam Mayor, Number 5.
Okay. Notice of completion for work completed by Precision Concrete Cutting and Repair. Any other requests for removal? All right, I'll entertain a motion for the balance.
Madam Mayor, I move the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Henderson for Items 1, 3, and 4 of the consent calendar, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Hus- Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
All right, thank you. Item Number 2, Mr. Jeremy Rivera, you wanted to speak to these items?
Good evening, City Council. When you guys had this meeting, I was not here on vacation. That's why I'd like to bring them back up. One of the hot topics that we've had for a couple months now as the extra deputy, I gave a copy of this slide to be handed out to you. I hope that you have them in front of you. Does everybody have that, so they can follow along with what I'm looking at? Should be the staffing levels for the deputy. If we go down to where it says Deputy Sheriff, and look over in the second column where it says 208 hours per week, if you take 24 hours a day multiplied by 7, that's 168 hours. 208 from 168, if I'm doing my math correctly, is 40 hours extra per week. So when we awarded this contract to the Sheriff's Department for 1.94 million for the 1819 fiscal year, did that include an extra deputy for 40 hours a week?
It included the 40-hour-a-week deputy, yes.
So what?
We have 208 hours.
Okay, so that's our cover deputy for 40 hours a week that we are going to pass with parcel tax in November for $80.
That was an additional 40 hours, in addition to this one.
Okay. I just thought-
Is it? That's correct, isn't it, Lieutenant Wolf?
Yeah, just to make it clear, we have that one deputy 24/7. You're right, that's the 168. Then we have a 40-hour cover deputy that we've had for a number of years, and they work from 3:00 PM to 3:00 AM, 3 and 4 days a week. It's a 12-hour shift. So we're trying to pass, or we're trying to get one more 40-hour deputy, so we have it 7 days a week, not just 3 or 4 days a week, depending on the work week.
Okay, thank you. I was under the understanding that we were trying to pass an extra 40 hour, because we didn't have that cover one. So, and I think that was kind of blurted. And the next thing was to talk about property addressed at 22273 Barton Road that the city purchased on September 13th, 2016. That was kind of before, ahead of my time, but I know that property was very controversial, that that individual wouldn't sell that property, and that's why we weren't able to get a Lowe's or a library. And then, I guess the city turned around and bought the property, and I didn't know that the city was in the business of buying and selling real estate. I don't even know if the city has a valid real estate license to be doing that. And then, it's called the Midas Project, I guess, as I drove by there today, so it's 4.83 acres that the city's trying to sell for development now. So I think that's something that I would like to request that the City Council give some direction to Mr. Duffy to, let's get it done, let's get the property sold and developed, because otherwise, it looks like in 2020 that we're going to be, start having to pay back that loan. And then, how it's paid for, like how the money was moved around, if you look at the bottom side there, so Equipment Replacement Reserve Fund, $400,000 was taken out, Waste Water Disposal Fund, 21, $260,000, or $260,000 taken out, Facilities Fund, $240,000 taken out. I mean, it's like we have all this slush money, and then we're fighting $360,000 for a deputy. I mean, but where all this money come from? So it doesn't look good on paper if someone's just reviewing it, you know? And it's like slush fund money to me. So those were my two comments on B2. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Mr. Assistant City Manager, would you like to address the purchase of the land?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Rivera, in relation to the funds that the loan were coming from, these are restricted funds. When City Council refers to looking for funding for an additional deputy, they're referring to general fund revenues. The wastewater fund and the facilities fund, these are restricted for certain activities, certain programs. Now, what the general fund did was take out a loan to purchase the property, and the intent was to resell it correct to a developer. The Housing Authority has property next to this property that we bought. When a real estate broker came, said if we consolidated this, it was better for the city to be able to market that and provide additional development on Barton Road. So Mr. Duffy has been actively pursuing a developer, and he will continue to do so, to market that and get us more economic development activities into the city.
Thank you, Madam Assistant City Manager. Item Number 5, Councilmember Hussey.
I have a couple questions for Mr. French. Now, it says that the completion for the work for the concrete, is that for citywide, or we have a second phase or something coming up, or?
Yes, Councilman, I see. That is for the streets, year 2 of the street program. We went back and looked at the sidewalks of those streets that we were doing this past year to get those repaired at this time, and if there was money available, we were also doing the streets that we started last year. Because last year, there were so many streets, we had to break up the project to get some of those addressed at this time as well.
All right, because I know this on, Van Buren on Wobbler Street, between Wobbler, between that and Franklin, there's a group of sidewalks there, and then they worked all around it, but they didn't take care of that. And I know they've been there a while, you know, the sidewalk in perfection, so I'm just wondering why that wasn't done, and, you know, if you're a street over, why won't you complete the same, you know, area at the same time?
Okay, we had, again, the previous year, they had some segments that they were doing with that sidewalk project was panel replacement, which was a little more in-depth than the grinding. So they did a panel replacement back then, and this year, we were doing the grinding and getting as much as we could done for the year 1 and 2. And so those segments were probably inventoried. We did inventory on all the streets, so we have the list, and then we were just going through and systematically addressing the issues that we could afford at this time. So those issues, I will have to look and see if they were excessive and we couldn't do the grinding, then we would be doing the panel replacement, which is the next step that we're going to be doing.
All right.
So I will definitely look at-
Well, I've seen some of our city staff, the maintenance guys, work on the sidewalks. I mean, wouldn't it be feasible to save us money just to go ahead and have our staff do a couple sidewalks a week, instead of paying us $20,000?
Sure. Our equipment is working now, and our staff can do some repairs, but when we get the long list of them, it's more efficient to just have a contractor come in, do them all at one time and get them addressed, and then have our staff for special cases or, you know, emergency repairs is what we would be using our staff for.
All right, well, thank you.
Okay, so we have Item 2 and Item 5. Is there a motion to approve? Or a motion to not approve?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 2 and Item 5.
Second.
Okay, motion for Item 2 and Item 5 by Councilmember Hussey, second by Councilmember Henderson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move to public comment or their request to speak during this time. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on items not on the agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. Items may also have a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment, and matters may be agendized at future meetings. Thank you. All right, our first speaker is Jeremy Rivera.
I put in two items, Madam Mayor. I didn't know which one, the first one was.
I actually have three.
Oh, three?
I had, I had two for the Item 2 from the consent calendar, and then one for the public comment. Facebook City Hall, daycare center.
Okay, that would be the, okay. One of the council members made some comments that I felt were personal at the last meeting, directed towards me. It's to my understanding that council members cannot do that during discussion. If you would like to talk to me personally, I'll be more than happy to meet with you individually at a public place. Councilmember Mayor Protem Sylvia Robles made very clear that she was very good at getting rid of the daycare center for Grand Terrace to save money. That's a hot topic, so Madam Mayor Protem, I would like to challenge you to find a replacement for that, because that's a great need for our city. Also, something that's always a hot topic with Mayor Protem Robles is Facebook City Hall. Well, guess what? Facebook won a presidential election, and if you're not aware of that, do some research. A lot goes on in Facebook. It's a multiple-billion-dollar company, obviously for a reason. It has 8 billion people on it. Mayor Protem Robles also requested a poll for what people want. Well, I think 400 signatures on a petition for an extra deputy, an extra 40 hours a week, is a pretty good cross-section of the city. Also, was mentioned, and I didn't even know in her stream of consciousness, that she was mentioning that Madam City Clerk was having a bad day on Monday getting ready for Tuesday night's meeting, and I didn't even know what that meant. So, you know, sometimes I wonder what's going on up here when you guys are making your comments, and I've put an agenda item for the next meeting for code of conduct for City Council meetings and members, is maybe to limit your comments to 3 minutes, because I'm limited to 3 minutes, and sometimes your comments go on for 15 or 20 minutes, and it's blah, 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 blah. No one wants to hear it. Lastly, and I guess I can do this on the other thing, is one council member is always on the same topic of budget, budget, budget. We have the same money from 2008 to 2018, $455,000 shy of the last budget. We balance the city budget. You know, my property taxes have consistently gone up. I pay almost $6,000 a year in property tax, so the money's going somewhere, and maybe we need to stop hiring city staff. We keep hiring more and more and more and more city staff members to the city. I'm also agendaizing items for next City Council meeting, as maybe we need to look at some other city councils in other cities that don't have the staff we do. City of Calamasa has their own fire department for 1.4 million. The county wants to charge us 2.2 million. Calamasa's 15 square miles worth 3.5 square miles. Something to think about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Our next speaker is David Hahn.
Mayor McNaboe, and City Council members and city staff, I want to start out by saying thank you a few months ago for the approval for the $35,000 short-term loan to help Habitat for Humanity San Bernardino area have some gap funding for our project on Michigan Street. If you have not driven down Michigan Street recently, well, actually, you could drive down there weekly and see something different, as we continue to progress in the development of those two homes. The homes now have walls and a roof on each, and the bathtubs were put in today, and painting started today, and Friday, Thursday and Friday this week, doors and windows will be installed. So we're moving quite quickly, and we are on track to get this finished by the middle of October. But we would not have been on track had it not been for that approval of that $35,000 short-term loan, which was, as I explained originally, it was gap funding. That gap has been filled by your short-term loan. Our full funding has kicked in. We have received it, and I'm here today to pay off that $35,000 loan, 4 months early, with interest for every day that the loan was outstanding. So Assistant City Manager, I guess, Fortune, I should give this to you and accept on behalf And again, thank you very much, and you're more than welcome to come by. If you want a private tour, just let me know, and I'll unlock all the different locks on the gates and let you walk through the homes, because you can actually walk through room to room now. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hahn. I appreciate the early payment. Are there any other requests to speak at this time? All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to City Council for their communications. We'll begin with Councilmember Kenneth Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I begin my prepared comments, I want to extend my personal thanks, as sure all my colleagues do, to Mr. David Hahn from Habitat for Humanity. You've come in, sir, and reestablished the credibility, along with your new chairman or president of the board, Ms. Hannah, doing a fantastic job, and it's, what you're doing right now is a testament to your good efforts and reflective of what we are about as the City of Grand Terrace. We've had, I think, 3 sessions of movies in the park. As the mayor indicated at the last meeting, she wanted to thank staff for ordering up good weather for all of the movies in the park, and I echo the mayor's comments in that regard. 2 weeks ago, or there about 3 weeks ago, was Ferdinand, and last Saturday night was Mrs. Doubtfire, and it's just a real nice family oriented gathering for Grand Terrace citizens, and I'm proud to be a part of that. A week ago, I believe, we had a special meeting that was called by the mayor regarding the proposed Fire District Proposal for Fire Services and annexing Grand Terrace into what's called Fire Protection Zone 5. And I don't want to take too much time on this, but I want, number 1, I want to request that we agendize this matter again, so that the citizens of Grand Terrace have the opportunity to understand and hear from staff and fire district personnel as appropriate what this proposal is all about. We heard from Chief Hartwig, the Fire District Chief, and he made a number of different comments regarding the process that we're about to go through. The mayor and I met with Supervisor Ramos last week, and while I don't think we intended for our meeting to change the county's position in this matter, there are a couple things I'd like to outline briefly for the, for the community. First and foremost, you need to understand that this is a, an assessment that's being imposed by the county fire district, and that citizens like yourselves and us do not have an opportunity to vote on this assessment. The assessment's $157 and change a year, and it goes up a percentage every year for probably as far as we can see into the future. So as a result of that, the citizens who collected the 400 and odd signatures that Mr. Rivera referred to earlier in his comments, came to the council and asked the council to withdraw from the November 18, November 2018 ballot, the city's own parcel tax for the additional 40-hour deputy. So it's an unfortunate convergence of events. On the one hand, you have the county imposing a tax without a vote of the people, and on the other hand, the tax that a majority of the council put on the November ballot was withdrawn based upon the citizens' requests, and that was to provide you an opportunity as to whether or not you wanted to assess yourselves $80 a year for an extra deputy. So a couple things briefly. The Board is going to be meeting on this matter October 16th, and the Board, the Board Supervisors acting as the Fire District Board of Directors, has established a LAFCO protest hearing process to gain, or to gauge opposition to this measure. I'm pretty familiar with that process, and I'll tell you that if the Board was really intending on hearing from citizens, it wouldn't have adopted the LAFCO protest hearing process, because if you don't protest this, then your vote is counted as a vote in support of the measure. And the requirements for protesting are significant and can't be met, in my view. About 100,000 people have to protest throughout the county in order to stop this measure. If the Board, in my view, was really interested in gaining, or at least understanding what Grand Terrace citizens feel about this particular issue, the Board would limit the eligible voters to Grand Terrace citizens and hold a referendum on this matter, or at least invite comments at the meeting. So what I didn't know before the meeting, unfortunately, and I apologize for that, is that the votes, the vote, the Board's vote was 3 to 2 to impose this tax. So one Board member flips, and there's no assessment. So without further ado, I just want to request, Madam City Manager, to, to place this on the agenda for a future detailed discussion by the community and by the council members, with a view toward determining what course of action we might want to take individually or collectively at the October 16th Board meeting, because notwithstanding the protests proceeding adopted by the Board, if the chambers are filled with people who object throughout the county who object to this, it could have a material effect on the Board's deliberations. I thank you for your patience in listening to that. That concludes my remarks. Madam Mayor, thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Councilmember Bill Hussey.
Yeah, I'd like to second Mr. Henderson's agenda item, to bring that up. Also, thank you for making those beautiful homes for people that could call Grand Terrace a permanent home. You know, I know, I met with the families, and they're really excited about it, so I walk by there, and they look really nice, so appreciate all the hard work and paying off the loan, and I know it's going to be a great access for this community. Thank you. I went to a League of City meeting on June 14th, and County Supervisor Kirk Higman, whatever, I can't remember his last name, it's just-
Higman.
Hig, yeah. Anyway, he was there talking, and they were talking about the Loma Linda, not Loma Linda, but the International Airport in Ontario, and one thing that's, seeing about all the traffic and how it's going to be more international flights coming in, it's one of the biggest cargo hubs in the area, he actually said the world, so I know Amazon's there, then UPS and stuff, so they're really getting a lot of traffic, and of course, they're making a lot of revenue, you know? If we could put an airport here in Grand Terrace, I don't know, maybe Flatland, Blue Mountain, we could probably, you know, take care of a lot of our revenue problem, but anyway, one of the other things that he said, mentioned, I know Mayor, Mayor Protem, and a couple other people that go up to Sacramento on business meetings and stuff, so our city staff, any city staffer or council that has to fly to Sacramento, they could get a waiver for their parking, they'll give you a pass, so that'll save the taxpayers some money, so if we had to go up there or something that we wanted to pay for, but that's part of the, part of the benefit that they want to pass on. And being on the League of City, you get to talk to other council members and stuff. I talked to Councilmember Phil Duper from Loma Linda, and we talked about the fire and the FP5, and he would like to have our city manager meet with his city manager for possible talking, negotiating for Loma Linda Fire to consolidate, something, another step. And let's see. And then I came to City Hall, and I got to see a magic show at the library, which is really neat, a lot of kids, had a good time, and I asked them if he can make my money reappear, but he said, no, just make it disappear. So, but anyway, they had a lot of kids, a lot of parents, they were happy, that's good summer programs, and they thanked the city too, because that was part of our community benefit fund, that we also helped with those community events, and that keeps kids busy during the summer, and it, you know, makes them an active member of the community. And another thing, a couple personal things, yeah, I have lost weight, I'm not sick. Some people have been asking if I've been sick, I'm not sick, but I don't know, we still have a healthy GT. All right, well, this is just a thing to pass on to my fellow veterans and people that might want to try to lose weight. I'm not, you know, didn't go on no drastic diet, I didn't get an operation, I just went on a regular diet that knocked out 500 calories, and I've been walking more, and that was started with the VA Move Program. So the Veteran Administration, if you're a vet or a disabled vet or something, you could go there, and it's free, it's a 12-week course, it's 2 hours a day, and, well, it's 2 hours once a week, and of course, they talk about what we already know about dietitian and what's good for you and what's bad for you, but cutting 500 calories was not that hard, you know, I make a recommendation, if you cut 500 calories a day and has 3,500 calories a week, so you'll lose at least a pound a week, so that's 52 pounds a year. But you also have to be active. And then, they also have a program on the app, it's called Lose It, so it keeps track of all their calories and also does this barcode, so if you want, you know, get healthy, that's one way to do it. Besides walking, I've been walking 50 miles a week, but I'm probably going to cut that down, because last week, a pit bull decided he wanted to come and cuddle with us, and it wasn't a very good experience, you know, some pit bulls run at you like a great torpedo and trying to get my dog, and was on leash in a German shepherd also, so I just want to say thank you for all the residents who stopped and assisted, you know, it was an ugly situation, it got uglier. I actually had to grab the pit bull, and thank God he didn't bite me, but he was trying to go after our dog and my wife, and so got to test out our new animal control on the weekend. Didn't want to test them out like that, but you know what, they're a pretty fast response to a young lady who did the animal control, was very professional, and they also had a sheriff there, because somebody called the sheriff, said some guy's getting mauled by a pit bull, so they responded pretty quick, and the animal actually lived 4 houses up from where the- actually lived four houses up from where the attack was, and he wasn't licensed, they don't know if he had a shot, so, and he got out the brand-new gate. So as a responsible pet owner, you've got to make sure your dogs are licensed and make sure they're shots because people, things like that. My biggest concern was that we have a middle school there, and the kids walk through there, and we also have an elementary school bus stop, so we had to be cognizant of that, and the dog, you know, especially to go after little things, you know, after it was all done, the dog was pretty friendly with me, I don't know, he just wanted to attack our dogs and go after my wife, but the city is not out here to make money off the licenses for public protection, to make sure your dog's licensed and they have all the shots. Once again, I want to thank all the residents who came to our aid, and thank the sheriff and our animal control. I said, I was pretty happy with the response, and they were pretty professional. So that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. Councilmember Doug Wilson.
Mayor, very briefly, we got a text today that talked about our Alper cameras, and rather than go into a long story, as you know, we install those in critical intersections, they worked today as they have in the past, and we were able to, our first responders were able to apprehend a person who's well-known apparently for burglaries, and that's just a first step. So I'd really like to thank the Sheriff's Department and all his cohorts and how they responded and how they, it was amazing how they just, you know, grouped together and took care of business, and that's what we've been looking for. So I think we're moving in the right direction that way, and applaud your activity, and we'll just keep on working on the support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Mayor Protem, Sylvia Rubliss.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if I'm supposed to meet somebody in a dark alley somewhere in Grand Terrace. Is it me or someone else? Who am I supposed to meet in, was I supposed to meet somebody in a dark alley in Grand Terrace? I don't remember, I don't have Facebook for 9213 or 1213 politicals, so I don't read your stuff, so I don't know who this challenge is to. But very briefly, on the childcare center was running a deficit, and that deficit limits our ability to fund sheriffs. We did provide childcare services by leasing our building to another entity, and they were unable to make it a go, but certainly, you know, is interested in continuing to do that, but it's not a core municipal city service, and it should not be funded at general fund expense. Also, as far as the poll, I also got a second on that, and it's not to belittle anybody's input, it's to get some data that we can work with. But clearly, you know, each week, it's look up, look down, you know, let me belittle you kind of thing, and it's pretty ridiculous on your part, sir. I also attended movies in the park, I had a cute incident, a little dog peeing on my purse. And I fabulosled it very well, and I hope it doesn't track another more dominant dog. But I had not done my Omnitrans Plans and Programs report from July 25th because we had a heavy agenda item, so I'd like to do that now. So very quickly, we had received and forwarded to the Board of Directors the West Valley Connector Project update, and we had also forwarded to the Board of Directors the Omnet Connects Short Range Transit Plan, and we recommended to the Board of Directors the adoption of a Triennial Title IV Report for submission to the Federal Transit Administration, and we also recommended to the Board of Directors authorization of a one-year pilot Adopt the Stop Program. And we also sent to the Board of Directors a customer-based ride sharing and transit interconnectivity study presentation, and that's also some poll data that we get on an annual basis to make sure we're providing services in an appropriate way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. My report is from SBCTA General Policy Committee, August 8th, and we recommend to the board consolidation of General Assembly with the Annual City-County Conference. What they're finding is that the actual audience that they really want for the General Assembly, which is an opportunity to talk about all the things that SBCTA is doing, that audience is generally found at the City-County Conference, and they have not been attending the General Assembly, so they will be combining them to do two things, one, they will be saving money, and number two, that they they expect to have the audience that they they want to share their information with. We also recommended approval of amendment on Call Labor Compliance Service contracts with GAFCON Inc. and GCAP Services. We received an update on FY 1718 work goals and objectives for the Transit Authority, and then we recommended approval on a budget amendment by amount of sales proceeds from trucks that were previously purchased through Department of Energy grant for the transition of 204 tractor-trailer vehicles to compressed or liquefied natural gas. So when when agencies such as this buy vehicles on grants through the state, when they sell them, they have to give that money back, whatever those proceeds are, just in case you wondered. We recommended a contract with ICF Jones &amp; Stokes to develop a San Bernardino County Regional Greenhouse Gas Emission Reduction Plan update, the release of requests for proposals for public outreach services and graphic design services in support of SBCTA projects and programs. This is something they used to do project by project, and what they've determined is that if they had one one contract that would provide these services across all the contracts, that they would probably have more efficiency in getting their message out, they would have more consistency in communicating with the public, and so they're going to go ahead and try that approach. We also recommended approval of a policy for allocation of Senate Bill One Local Partnership Program funds, regardless of the fact that it's on the ballot to perhaps be repealed, they still need to plan for the eventuation that it it might not be repealed. We also had the Board of Directors Metro Valley Study Session on August 9th, so we received a major project status report for the period through June 2018, and then we reviewed and recommended for final approval the Contract for Construction Zone Enhanced Enforcement Program, otherwise known as COZI, services with the California Highway Patrol for the Interstate 10 Corridor Contract, the first phase of the project, also the release of requests for qualifications for design-build contract for Mount Vernon Viaduct, that's a project in city of San Bernardino, and the award of a contract with South Star Engineering and Consulting for Construction Management Services for State Route 60 Archibald Avenue Interchange. Lastly, I wanted to share with my colleagues a request that that was, that came from the U.S. Department of State, and this is something for us to consider. The Los Angeles Passport Agency is inquiring as to whether the city of Grand Terrace would want to explore an opportunity to accept passport applications, and they are offering $35 execution fee for each application that is processed, so that is something that perhaps we could have come back to us. That will conclude my report, and we have no public hearings tonight, we have no unfinished business, so we will move to new business, which is award from Community Benefits Fund to the Grand Terrace High School Football Boosters for Grand Terrace Football Community Kickoff Event. May we have a staff report, please?
Mayor, Mayor, sorry, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and the City Council, my name is Todd Nakasaki, management analyst in the Finance Department. The staff report before you is a Community Benefits Fund Grant Application that supports the following goals: ensure our fiscal viability through the continuous review of grant applications received, and goal number four, develop and implement successful partnerships through productive collaboration with community youth programs. This is an application from the Grand Terrace High School Football Boosters for the Grand Terrace High School Football Team Kickoff Event. The purpose of the program is to promote and support athletic programs within the community. The amount they are applying for is $2,000. This is the first time that the Grand Terrace High School Football Boosters have applied for the Community Benefits Fund Grant. It is to be used for equipment, volunteer t-shirts, decorations, and other costs for the event. The approved original amount is $20,000. City Council has approved $2,000 in this fiscal year, leaving a balance of $18,000. Should the City Council approve the application before them tonight, this will leave a balance of $16,000 in the fund. That completes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Analyst Nakasaki. Do the applicants wish to say anything at this time?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. We just want to say thank you for the support of our, well, it's our high school football program, and what we're really looking to do is to bring the community out and just help to celebrate the upcoming season. We had a really, really good season last year, we didn't make it all the way to state, but we did win our league for the first time in high school history, which has been, how many years now?
This will be our sixth.
Six years. So we're looking to go just as far this year, if not further, we're hoping to go further, actually. So we really just want to bring the community together on a Friday Night Lights kind of atmosphere, and we really would like for all of the council members and the mayor to join us this Saturday at our event, we will have a time where dignitaries can be invited to come up and say a few words, and... It's really weird when you get in front of everybody, you kind of lose your spot. So I just wanted to tell you, if you have a few minutes, to talk about how much this money means to our program. We feed, we provide extra services for approximately 100 to 140 players throughout our season each each year, and it falls completely upon our High School Football Booster Program to provide those extra funds, maybe for a Friday night, we feed the varsity team on Friday night, we have, we do other things that need to be, we have equipment that needs to be replaced every year that's not provided by the school, so every dollar that we get that can go towards just providing those extra things is a dollar that's spent on the safety of our kids, the well-being of our players, and just making sure that the community has somewhere to go on a Friday night. Do any of you have any questions for us?
Thank you. Before I get to questions from council, would you please tell me your name for the record?
I'm so sorry. My name is Talisa Strensky, and I'm the Secretary for the Grand Terrace High School Boosters.
Thank you.
My name is Tracy Preston, and I'm the treasurer for the High School Football Boosters.
Thank you, ladies both, for being here. Are there questions of staff or the applicants tonight? Councilmember Wilson?
You say there's an event Saturday, what time?
Well, it's beginning at 8 o'clock, and it's going till 2:00 p.m. We are hosting a youth football camp during that time, then that's going from 8:00 a.m. until 11:00 p.m., where our players and coaches will be hosting the youth teams from Grand Terrace Community Football. So, yeah, it's going from 8 to 2.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Well, yeah, I had RSVP'd, and then looking at my calendar, I realized it was from 8 to 2, but there wasn't a block of time that you wanted us there.
Yes, I will make sure that we have that information to Mr. Nakasaki and Ms. Fortune so that you can have those times, so that you don't just show up at 8 o'clock and you're there until 2:00 p.m.
Councilmember Hesse.
Can you tell us about your clothing drive you're having, Tim?
Oh, yes. So I welcome all of you to like our Facebook page because our Facebook pages, there's two, there's one for Grand Terrace High School Football, and there's also one for Grand Terrace High School Football Boosters. We are having a clothing drive where you can fill the truck, and it's a charity organization that comes and collects all of, what kind of goods is it, just like textiles, clothing, shoes, different kinds of items that we're trying to fill the truck this Saturday, so if you have any unwanted clothing items, we bring them on down on Saturday to fill the truck, and if you need a pickup, you can also let us know, and we will be happy to pick up within the city.
Any other questions at this time? All right, thank you very much, I appreciate you being here, and I do have the event on my calendar, but I would like to know what timeframe you're looking at.
For sure, I believe you were with us there last, this is our second annual, and you were with us there last year, Mayor, and it was just a wonderful event, and we're looking to just kind of build that, so we will for sure let you know so we can have you there with us.
Who's in the dunk tank this time?
I don't know, I don't know.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you being here.
We're hoping for a coach, I know that that will get more activity, I believe, but yes, so, thank you very much.
All right, I will go to open public comment, are there any requests to speak at this time? All right, closed public comment, bring it back to council for consideration of a motion. Councilmember Henderson?
Yes, Mayor, just before I make a motion for approval, I just wanted to to express my thoughts on how important and the Community Benefits Fund has turned out for the city. I want to compliment my colleagues for first establishing the fund. $25,000 or $20,000 doesn't sound like a lot, but you just heard about one of the positive impacts along with our Little League and soccer operations, it's a great way for the city on limited resources to support youth activities and youth sports, so my thanks to the participants and the recipients of the fund, and my thanks to my colleagues for establishing the fund in the first place, and with that, I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Henderson, second by Councilmember Hesse, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hesse, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Rubliss voting yes, and Mayor Matt Nubel voting yes.
All right, thank you. See you ladies on Saturday. We'll move to City Manager Communications by our Assistant City Manager Cynthia Fortune.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. This is the City Manager's update for the 14th of August, just a couple of things we wanted to inform the City Council on. So the first one is the Barton Road Interchange Project Update. So we're showing little milestones that have been completed, so half of the bridge was demolished in April, north and south Barton Road curb and gutters were poured, and Vivienda and Commerce was paved. So the next item that's going to happen is the traffic signal work will begin on the 15th of September. Public Works Director is estimating this will take about two weeks, so that the Barton Commerce Intersection will open on October 1st. That is the project schedule at this time. So we provided a little, so this is, this is the, this will be open, traffic signal will be working here, and they will turn off the one that's off of Michigan. Another reminder, we'd like to remind City Council and the public that, as Councilmember Henderson has mentioned, we've had three movies in the park, the last one being Mrs. Doubtfire, we have one more, and this will be on Saturday, August 25th, at the Susan Pettah Park, that is the park next to our senior center, and the movie that we'll be showing will be Boss Baby. So we'd like to invite everybody to come out and enjoy, and join us for that evening. And our last update is the Edison Outage School. Edison will be hosting an informative seminar on its communication processes, how to prepare for maintenance, repairs, and rotating outages. The tentative date they provided us was August 22nd, that's Wednesday at the City Hall Community Room, and as soon as our Public Works Director confirms that date, we'll be putting it on our website and sending out an e-blast to all our subscribers. Mayor, that concludes the City Manager's update.
All right, thank you. We do have a closed session tonight, so at this time, we will recess to closed session. We have one item, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, that is the property at Grand Terrace Childcare Development Center, 22400 Barton Road, number 200, Grand Terrace, California. City Negotiator is Cynthia A. Fortune, Assistant City Manager, negotiating parties 22400 Barton LLC, James D. Franklin, and under negotiation is price and terms of payment. Thank you all, to all of you who came out tonight, and if you are not here when we come back, please note that the next regular City Council meeting will be held Tuesday, August 28th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. Agenda item requests must be submitted in writing to the City Clerk's Office no later than 14 calendar days. than 14 calendar days preceding the meeting, so at this time, we are in recess to closed All right, we'll reconvene open session. We do have a report out from this closed session. City Council recessed into closed session at approximately 6:50 p.m. to meet with its real property negotiator regarding item one on the, item I, one on the agenda, one item on the agenda, which relates to the sale of the former Grand Terrace Childcare Development Center located at 22400 Barton Road, number 200 in Grand Terrace, 22400 Barton LLC, that is the name of the company. On July 10th, 2018, the City Council authorized the sale of the real property for the amount of $1 million, and entered into an agreement and escrow instructions to accomplish the sale. Subsequent to entering into the agreement and opening escrow, the buyer discovered that it would be required to make approximately $218,968 in improvements to the property, which includes $196,018 in ADA compliance improvements. The buyer requested a reduction in the purchase price as a result of this discovery. The City Council voted to approve a reduction in the sale price of $90,000 to offset a portion of the improvements and to authorize the City Manager to execute on amendment the sales agreement and escrow instructions and any other documents necessary to carry out the council's direction. The revised sale price is $910,000. The motion was made by Councilmember Wilson and seconded by Councilmember Henderson, and the City Council voted unanimously to approve this. And that concludes the report out from the closed session. So, with that, we will adjourn our meeting, and again, the next regular City Council meeting will be held Tuesday, August 28th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. Agenda item requests must be submitted in writing to the City Clerk's Office no later than 14 calendar days preceding the meeting. Thank you all for your attendance and participation. We are adjourned.